Thirty-seven.
Let me fix that.
Yeah, so let's make sure we get that correct. So, the first order of business is for the Planning Board members here to review the application and to decide if it is complete. If it is complete, we will accept it by vote, or not accept it, denied accept it. If we do accept it, then we'll move into public hearing for the subdivision. So, just giving the rest of the board some time to look through it, the application.
Was that application, so was it thirty-seven or twenty-seven?
Thirty-seven.
Oh, so it's right on there.
It's correct there, yeah. These maps here on the bottom somewhere say Lot Three, or Map Three, Lot Twenty-seven. Our alternate from the Planning Board, Amalia Torres, is excused. So everyone's had a chance to review on the board here, the application itself. Curtis, Brian. Okay. So, I will make a motion to accept this application as complete.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Hey, what's going on? You just getting this now?
No.
So, can I just see everybody just reading now? So, are they just reading from the first one now?
The application, yes.
That's kind of what I was thinking, but I just put faith in Sean.
That's an oversight on my part to not have...
Well, let's not put too much faith.
Yeah, let's not.
Yeah, I mean, that's needed.
Yeah, I mean, if we're gonna go down, then we gotta go down one by one if you wanna do it. I mean, if the checklist has been met, we could go down one by one.
Checklist is different than the application.
Well, I mean, you know, you give us a thirty-second look, so it's kinda hard.
We could, we can, we can do...
Any longer?
Yeah. Yeah. We can, would you like to do that? We can do that.
I would, okay.
Yeah, let's go down the major subdivision checklist. So, we have the application, major subdivision received from Barbara Riley for Habitat for Humanity, property located at twenty-four forty-three Route Sixteen, Albany, New Hampshire, which is Map Three, Lot Thirty-seven, with an acreage of thirty-three point seven eight. Description is Habitat for Humanity subdivision, a five-unit subdivision with associated roadway and utility infrastructure. And to that, I would just point out that it's, the proposal's five units of housing with one unit of undeveloped. Right? So, just to make that clear, it's six parcels with five units developed.
Six lots of...
Six lots of...
Five.
Yep. Okay. All right. The applicant hereby agrees to carry about, carry out the improvements agreed upon as shown and attended by said plat, including any work may necessary by unforeseen conditions which become apparent during construction. Two, the applicant shall provide and install standard street signs approved by the town for all street intersections. Three, applicant shall give the town on demand proper deeds for land or rights of way reserved on the plat for street drainage or other purposes as agreed upon. Four, the town, the applicant shall save the town harmless from any obligation it may incur or repairs it may make because of failure by need, applicant, to carry out any of the foregoing provisions. Five, the applicant is to make no changes whatsoever to the final plat as approved by the Albany Planning Board unless a revised plat or plat of re-subdivision is submitted to and approved by the Albany Planning Board. Six, the applicant shall obtain and abide by all state required permit, all required state permits as applicable. Signed and received. Next page is the application fees. We did receive the correct amount for application. It is a subdivision of land fee for two hundred. Each lot is, so it's five lots. So, this is a good question, subdivision of land fee. So, there's ultimately gonna be six lots, but only five of them are being developed. Right? So, it is a six-lot subdivision. Yes?
That is a good question.
We're taking a lot and kinda get it into six pieces?
Yep.
Yeah.
So, there will be five new lots.
Five new lots. Interesting. Okay, so that is something to examine. Should it be six lots at fifty dollars each, or is it five lots at fifty dollars each? That's a good question.
That is a question for you guys.
I don't have an immediate answer. Does anyone?
I don't have an answer, but...
All right, to be determined. We have the L chip fee, twenty-five dollars, check received. We have public notice fees to the Conway Sun and the certified mails to the abutters that was received for the correct amount. And then recording fees, thirty dollars per sheet, and it'll be two sheets, so that's sixty dollars, that's received. So, fees are complete, except for this question of, should it be six lots or five? We have to figure that out. Onto the major subdivision checklist. Again, applicant Barbara Riley, Mount Washington Valley Habitat for Humanity. Name and description of subdivision, Habitat for Humanity. I did line this out, I don't know if you have this, the original application here does say twelve-unit planned unit development, that's from the previous, so someone cut and pasted and didn't put in the appropriate. So, it should say six lot, five unit, I think is the wording we're looking for here, 'cause it's ultimately six lots with five units. It is Map Three and it is Lot Thirty-seven. Okay, checklist, documents required, so is this in the subdivision regs that each of you have? Is there a checklist in there? Number ones, completed subdivision application, we're working on that now. Two, five working copies of plat plan, received. Notification of abutters with pre-addressed labels, received. Agent designated on application, received. All holders of conservation, preservation, agricultural preservation restrictions. We are presuming it's received, we haven't done the research to verify it, by our own engineer or other. So, that is going on faith from the applicant without review, which could be something that we wanna make sure to review. Copy of New Hampshire subdivision application with supporting documentation, this is pending. Still coming. Filing fees, received. State and town driveway permit, pending. Pending still. All applicable federal, state, and town approvals, pending. Copies of any existing or proposed protective or restrictive covenants and deed restrictions, And the plat requirements. We have the map at one inch to four hundred with the title block. The only thing I could see about the title block is correcting that lot number to the correct lot number of thirty-seven.
That will be fixed first thing tomorrow.
Thank you. An approval block, Sheets Two and Three. Oh, there, that's the approval block. Yep. Tax map and parcel number to be corrected. Number five, identification of abutting properties, property owners' names, roads, easements, parks, public places, I believe that's all present. Six, name and address assigned sealed of New Hampshire registered land surveyors, engineers, consultants, all sheets, that is present. Graphic scale, one inch, four hundred, that is correct. Symbol legend, yes. North reference, yes. Location is zoning district boundaries, including wetlands and flood plains. This is supplemental Sheet One, the sheet underneath here, so existing conditions. So, supplemental Sheet One representing wetlands and flood plains, existing conditions. Took the graphic map, which is Sheets Four and Six, and supplemental Sheet One. Benchmark, Sheet One. Survey of property lines showing total acreage with bearing and distance, boundary lines and setbacks, location of permanent markers, streets, right-of-way and existing street names, proposed new lot lines and area of each new lot expressed in acres and square feet. This is all in supplemental Sheet One, which is the existing conditions.
Proposed new lot lines, Sheet Two and Three.
Yes, proposed lot lines, Sheets Two and Three. Really Sheet Three, right? Two doesn't have it at all. Sheet Three, yeah, Sheet Three has proposed new lot lines. Fourteen, location of all existing proposed deed restriction, covenants, et cetera, this is supplemental Sheet One. Gonna pencil this, deed restrictions. Again, not reviewed yet by Town of Albany, just as presented by the applicant. Fifteen, location of water courses, existing condition, Sheet One. Sixteen, location, description, natural features, Sheet One. Seventeen, soil types, tree lines, vegetative species, again Sheet One, existing conditions. Eighteen, supplementary plans, non-applicable. Nineteen, submit seven final plats. So, we are now at the final plat process, part of the process yet. Twenty, the following may be required by the Planning Board before approval is granted. There's a whole list of things that the Planning Board may require. Plans and profiles of roads by Albany Street Standards for Design and Construction, showing lot area, road frontage, intersecting roads, location, width, curbing, and types of access egress, all easements, right-of-way, on record, and certification that the proposed street centerline lot locations have been adequately flagged on the ground at the site to allow evaluation of the proposed subdivision by the Planning Board or town engineer. So, listed as represented on Sheets Two, Five, Six, and Eight. I do have this question of, are things flagged and states for a walkabout?
I can verify. I personally did not do it, so I...
All right. Landscape plan showing existing proposed open spaces, Sheets Five and Six. Location of all existing drainage structures, sanitary sewers, water, gas, electric layouts, and fire protection. So, this is existing. So, existing condition, Sheet One, there's pretty much nothing on the lot. And then, last here is plans and profiles of proposed drainage structures, sanitary sewers, water systems, and public or private utilities, which is Sheet Six. Should have all of the septic design on it. So, that is the checklist for applications for major subdivisions.
Well, it's, the lot, the number of lots seems like there's something that needs to be corrected on the application.
Yes. Six lots, five developed.
Right.
Agree.
Lot number also, you said twenty-seven, saying on that.
Yeah, the map state Lot Twenty-seven, gosh, to be corrected to Lot Thirty-seven.
Something about the scale, the scale of it's supposed to be one inch each forty. How many inches is that?
I think that's like the minimum.
Minimum.
Yeah. Yeah, so this is one inch to fifty feet. One inch to four hundred would be hard to read, is that correct? Other people with more experience reading this?
Yeah, it was standard.
Yeah. So, this exceeds our minimum requirement. So, we have a motion, and a second, we can withdraw that and have these corrections and reconvene with the application as-is next month, or we can accept the application with those provisional changes and move forward into public hearing?
I make a motion to accept them with the provisions and move forward?
Oh, hold on on that. So, we'll need to withdraw the previous motion.
Okay.
Yeah. So, we're just still in the discussion of the original motion. So, original motion...
So, I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, so we'll withdraw the original motion and the second. So, now we're back to, does anyone wanna make a motion on accepting this application as complete?
With provisions, yeah.
With provisions, yeah.
I can make a motion.
Or do we simply wanna say, next month, come with the corrections?
That seems way too bureaucratic for me, so I would think we'd wanna just, to punt it a month, just 'cause of a couple clerical things is kinda crazy.
Yeah.
So, I just think we should make a motion, we should make a motion to accept it with the corrections, and then we can go to the next stage of this.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Loud and clear.
Yeah, make a motion to accept the application with the provisions that we pointed out.
Okay, so we have Morris West made a motion to accept the application as presented with the noted corrections to be made, including Map Three, Lot Thirty-seven, and that it is six lots subdivision with five to be developed.
And is that, you're going to need a check for another fifty dollars?
I'm gonna look into that.
Okay. I just wanna be clear.
Yes, thank you. I think the answer's gonna be yes, but I'm gonna look into it. So, we have motion, any further discussion? A motion and a second? Public, hearing none. Call for vote, all those in favor of accepting? Aye. Okay, so we now have an accepted application, so we would then, I will now open the public hearing portion of this meeting to hear the presentation of major subdivision from Habitat for Humanity as represented by, sorry?
Davis Bartlett.
Davis...
Bartlett.
Bartlett, thank you. Public hearing opened at six fifty-six PM. Oh, yes, Mr. Bartlett, you're welcome there. If anyone from the public wants to come up and speak at any time, please just come forward to the microphone and go ahead.
So, as noted, we're presenting a six-lot subdivision of Map Three, Lot Thirty-seven. It's proposed a short road to create the frontage for all the lots. Not that we need to, but one driveway off Route Sixteen is going to be far less invasive than six running down the road. Other than that, it's a pretty standard development, nothing out of the ordinary, and I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Open questions?
You've applied for a driveway permit or a road kind of permit?
To New Hampshire DOT, yes.
Have they requested a turning lane, do you know? Have you heard the feedback?
I have not heard.
That's gonna, that's gonna be questionable, that's on the double lanes, right, I believe?
I believe so. Doesn't, I'm not sure if...
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, I'm familiar with the area, I'm pretty sure that's right. But that's a question I would have, I think that being a major subdivision, the question would be whether a turning lane is involved. And a turning lane is a costly issue, so I'll be curious about how that falls.
And I'm sure DOT is gonna look at that and we'll update you guys with whatever we get back from that.
'Cause we do have road improvements, maybe not in that section, so that may fall on you to put a turning lane there.
Understood.
Sean, isn't it board discussion, then? We open it up to general discussion?
Yeah. We can have board discussion first.
I think the board should talk about it, and then we open it up to the general discussion, just to keep it...
Sounds good.
Keep it somewhat.
Picking Kelly.
Not picking on you, Kelly, but it just...
You asked for a couple of...
Yeah, no, I know, but usually we just talk about it first, so. So, I got some questions, Sean. You mind? All right. So, I mean, all your lots are two acres. Your road, you guys did our road standards a few years ago, so it's a foot of five inches gravel, it's six inches of inch and a half gravel, and it's gonna use a pavement, if I can.
If those are the standards.
Yeah, yeah, it is, it is specified.
Do you meet the frontage requirements within our zoning?
We meet the distance requirements for frontage.
Yeah, on a town road?
So...
'Cause I just don't see...
It's not currently a town road.
Well, right, but to do a subdivision, you have to build it like it is a town road.
Oh, yeah.
So...
To be符合town standards.
Right, so you have to build it exactly like it was gonna be a town road someday. So, I just don't see the feet on this...
That's gonna be on Sheet Three.
Okay. So, just so, it does meet every one of them?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a key to one of the pages.
I was kinda asking you, so you could just tell me. In the beginning, you said?
Yeah. There you go. One more, I guess. Nope, still one more.
Shows the, there's the curve table. There's the curve, and there's lines. So, the lines and the curves are on plan.
So, you gotta do the math. Oh, they ought to do it for you.
So, L one is one, so that's two hundred and one feet. And then, L two plus L three is under two hundred feet. So, C four... So C four, there's a curve there, so it does, you just have to hold the map.
That's really the only one that was close.
It was close, yeah.
And then C five, C eight, and C seven. C seven, one thirteen, and C five is.
One ninety-one, one thirteen. What's the process of a fire chief and the radius of, has the fire chief, comma, fire chief looked at the radius and was all set on the thirty-five foot, I would assume so, but is that its town standard or the radius at the end?
Everything would have been designed using town standards as much.
Yeah, okay, I just wasn't sure if that was a town standard or that was a fire chief approval. What's the radius? Thirty-five feet on that one? Yeah. Yes, tight, so I was wondering. I see there's a ten thousand gallon tank at the end, is that, I assume that's for fire?
Yes.
It's all I got, I guess.
So do you have anywhere in here that says about inspection of construction, then that the, that the landowner pays for the inspection of it, not the taxpayer?
That is a great question, don't have an immediate answer for you, I would have to look through and get back to you.
So that would be something that you'd put on it for conditional improvement, I would think.
We had that in our subdivision regulations, it says that explicitly.
It's just something that has gotten missed in the past, that the town has gotten put on the hook for inspecting subdivisions.
Yeah.
And really, in most towns, it's the applicant's responsibility.
Yeah.
We could request that the applicant put something in writing stating that they will pay for it.
I think that would be part of it, the approval, I would suspect, right?
Does it detail inspection reports requirements, like how, how is that worded in the town?
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. The inspection process for the major subdivision?
Yes.
How is that worded in our standards as far as frequency or?
Where's my copy? Let's read through it. Subdivision regulations, there should be a copyright there, you guys have a copyright over there.
Does it say anything about it? I don't think it's, no, okay.
Okay, G, which is page, six, seven, page eight, letter G of our subdivision regulations. The board may require special investigative studies, environmental assessments, legal review of documents, administrative expenses, or other matters necessary to make an informed decision. The applicant, prior to final approval of the plat, shall pay the cost of such studies and investigations. And then H one, no street or open space will be accepted by the town Albany until such times all the improvements have been carried out as shown in the final plat in accordance with requirements of these regulations, and subject to any conditions established by the board at the time of final approval of the plat.
And if there's anything that gets built, go to the town.
I have one article to be approved for, as a town road anyway, so.
Correct. So it doesn't really get into technical details of frequency or what their inspection is, so can we, as a board, present a reasonable?
Yes.
Inspection?
This is the time for that, exactly, yes.
So.
And I'll say collectively, this hearing can be continued to our next month's regular meeting if we don't feel that we have everything we need to make a final decision tonight. So just to be clear, there is the space to continue to next month's meeting and have time to research and get things finalized in between.
Well, I was just gonna say, ATB is very familiar with inspecting construction projects, so we could.
We have an entire department.
Yeah, we could defer them to suggest frequency.
A proposed plan for inspection?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, ATB is also the town, the town engineer and the engineer for this project, so it's, it is what it is there, but, I mean, I would think that we would put on, anything we do, a daily inspection is needed per construction of the, of the roads, just like every other town, most every other town in the area.
Okay, so I'm hearing two things, that we would like ATB to provide a inspection plan, basically, and that we should be allowed to inspect on a daily basis as needed.
I just think there should be a third-party engineer that inspects the construction of the road.
Third-party engineer.
Or a engineer's representative that inspects the road, it's, if it's probably not gonna be ATB if they're the ones, they're representing the client here, but.
Yeah, that would be typical, if we oppose a project, we generally wouldn't be the ones doing the administration work on construction.
Right. But that's not Albany's problem, that's the applicant's problem, you know, to find a third-party person, or maybe we would find him and, and have them.
Pay for it, actually.
That's my understanding of how it goes.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. That sounds good.
When is this, when are you expecting to build this?
Not till next summer, probably. I mean, realistically.
So it doesn't really matter if we get all the paperwork in order and then we can look at it one more time and, you know, correct documents.
We want you guys to be comfortable with what you have and information you have, so if there's anything else you need, please let us know.
Is the DES construction general permit been approved yet?
All that's still pending.
So it's not imminent anyways, even if we were to?
No.
Brian, could you, I couldn't even.
Oh, sorry, I just asked if the construction general permit for the, from the New Hampshire DES has been issued yet, it says it's pending, so.
It's not?
No.
I don't think you could get six driveways off Route sixteen anyway. So you could get two and you could have two shared driveways for four lots, so you gained a lot by building the road.
I don't believe we ever entertained that idea.
It was, it was talked about in some of the preliminary discussions with Josh and, whatever.
My question for Mr. Bartlett is to just run through the septic design a little bit, page six, if you would. And there's a swale here, is that a drainage catch basin swale?
Let me get there quickly. So, not septic, just, just drainage.
Just drainage on page six?
Yep, the septic would be individual systems on each lot.
So it's not specified in these plans?
Those are not specified, no.
Because they don't need to be, because they'll be individual take or lots that?
Yeah.
As long as you meet the setbacks and?
And all that will have to be run through DES and code enforcement before it can be built anyway.
Okay.
We do have four thousand square foot areas shown where development is possible on each lot.
Okay. Based on soils and?
Yeah, soils, setbacks, all that. And we have done test pits in each one of those areas, so we do have soil suitable in each area, just the actual designs aren't in here.
Okay.
As far as the drainage, this is just to collect any water from the road and treat it, onsite, no additional runoff if you go onto any of the abiding properties. And I know it looks like a pond on here, but Josh told me that probably ninety-five percent of the time that should be dry.
What was the thing you said, each lot has how much square feet of?
The four thousand square feet.
Developable, developable area.
And that's just an area where the septic could theoretically be, most lots have more than that that is usable for buildings or otherwise developable, but.
So this is four thousand square feet for the septic and the building?
In theory, yes.
And the structure?
Well, the four thousand square feet is for the septic for DES purposes.
Okay.
There's plenty of area outside of that for the building on each of the lots.
Okay. So it's four thousand square feet of area that's pre-approved for septic by the state? How do you phrase that? What is this four thousand feet, I just want to get it in the notes.
The four thousand square feet, it's not pre-approved, but we've proven that it is possible to put a septic there.
Okay.
There's, there's nothing saying the septic has to go there, it makes sense because the test pits are already done, but each one of those areas is just a four thousand square foot area that is usable for septic.
According to state standards?
Yes.
Okay, so this catch basin is just for drainage from the road to be built?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. Board members, any further questions for, from the board, for Mr. Bartlett?
So the outlet structure for that drainage does what?
So the infiltration basin itself is designed for a fifty-year storm, the drainage structure is designed to help disperse anything above that, so that it doesn't just fill up and flow back into the road, it has somewhere to go after the fifty-year storm level. There's a level spreader proposed out there to help disperse the water once it comes out of the infiltration basin.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Bartlett from the board?
Hearing done.
Public comment, then questions from the public or Mr. Bartlett or for the planning board in regards to the subdivision?
I'm over it.
Yes, thank you.
Just come on up.
Thank you.
State your name. Ask your question.
My name's Chris Olson, I am a direct abutter to the south of this project, I'd like to thank the board for letting us speak about this tonight and putting in any of our input. I'd like to start off, it's nice to see what Habitat does, it's just sad to see a thirty-four acre parcel of land chopped up to be just minimal, two acre lots, we have a two acre minimal thing and that's all they're doing, just to bear minimal and whatever they're gonna do with the other twenty-two acres, I believe that's up to them, but it's, it's sad to see just minimal lot sizes being built after you've purchased a thirty-four acre lot. Second, we had questions on the houses on lots five and six. The actual setbacks, is that right at twenty-five feet? I don't see for what reason, if you've got a two acre lot, why you have to jam not just on one side of us, but on two sides of us, right up against the setbacks for them houses. It's kind of a rural area, I don't see why you can't put them houses further into the center of those lots and give us some space, because as you know, there's very, that property way back from my understanding has been a field. Since my wife has lived here since two thousand and eight, that property, we vote and mowed right up to the property line, there's no tree buffers there. I planted some trees on the northern border of them, they're only two to six feet tall, they're gonna be looking right in the back windows, they're gonna be looking right in our back window, it's gonna, I just don't see why we couldn't ask Habitat to be a nice neighbor and set them houses further into the lots a little bit.
And you absolutely can ask, and like I said, these are final locations of the houses.
Yep.
These is just areas we needed to put on the plan to prove that it.
That's why I didn't know if these are your final locations, you guys are trying to decide, or if we could ask you to be a nice neighbor, neighborly thing, and if you could move them houses off five and six, if you could push them further back into the lots and not sit right on setbacks. I understand the town of Albany, we have twenty-five foot setbacks, and hopefully maybe in the future, you guys are talking about having to redo some plans and that, is to maybe increase the distances for primary residents to put a further setbacks in, and they have like accessory sheds and that stuff, as I've seen in other towns, like, you know, ten, twenty-five foot setbacks, but if we're doing two acre minimal lots, I really don't see why a primary residence needs to be twenty-five feet in. You got two acres to play with there, I think primary residence should have a further setbacks, but that's something for the planning board to do down in the future.
I can bring up with our client and we can have that discussion.
I mean, if not, we'd really like to see a panel fence put up on part of that northernly lot line to us, and maybe on the eastern side of it, if you want to keep them houses there, you know, ask for a fence, ask for some kind of panel fence or something, it's a big subdivision going in there, we've had, my wife's had no neighbors there since two thousand and eight, I've lived here since two thousand. I've lived here since 2016 now. And never had a neighbor in our backyard or to the side.
I do get what you're coming from.
You know, you guys are doing what you can do and I certainly appreciate what Habitat does, but I'd just like to be a nice neighborly neighbor and...
I guess a question, we're kind of going to jump in, but the blocks we see on the plans, is that an actual planned structure or that's a square footage for...
Like I said, that is purely an area to prove that a septic is viable.
So nowhere in these plans you show where you...
We do not show any proposed buildings in these plans.
That was also my other question, because if you come in 160 feet off of Route 16, come in 160 feet of the abutting property, or my well is 160 feet in, 44 feet off the property line. I can show you approximately, you know, just...I don't know where you guys are trying to leave the septic or anything else. I just wanted to note it where my well was.
Okay.
I see you've got all yours with a 75-foot radius. My 75-foot radius, my well goes in the lot number six.
Okay. Next time I have a crew out there, I'll have them pop over and locate your well so we can make sure you've got the same...
Okay, yeah, I really appreciate that. I guess the kind of question, now you understand it, I understand it more about you guys putting in that water retention system here for the storms for lot six and that, and how you get that spillway easement going into that other one. I'm wondering how that was based on how much water flow and stuff. I hadn't seen structures like that. I've seen some, but that's why I didn't all understand why you guys didn't have more catch basins set up along the road. But I've seen another, you do have some, looks like some catch basins and underground drainage pipe in there and stuff?
Yeah, we do, we do have some.
The other big question I had to this was on the town of Albany's street standards and design for design and construction, section four, C, street design number six. Part of that states, and I don't know if you can pull it up, is the center island is required with road surface and shoulders to required width. Center island shall be a green space and it may contain stormwater structure. Is that not any green space in that? Called a cul-de-sac?
We're not proposing an island, I don't believe. I'd have to...
I just happened to see it in the Albany town in your road design and construction and was just wondering why that was not put in. Because then it also has, section, it's down in section eight, it says that you have more rules and more stringent.
Just for clarification, did you restate, so it was number four, C, six of the Albany?
Yes, so it goes section four, C, and number six.
And then there's section four, you go to a second thing?
Um, yeah, it was down in, I guess it would be each section in that same thing that says stricter regulations shall apply.
So four C six and four C eight?
H.
H.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the first one was the question about a center island on a cul-de-sac?
Yes.
Okay, and the second thing...
Well, there wasn't any green space in the cul-de-sac on the island created.
A center island slash green space, okay.
I haven't seen the town require that.
I just happened to see it. I went through the ordinances, was asking.
And I know there was a push years ago for some more green space, but it becomes just a dead dirt space. The last two subdivisions I've seen approved did not have that, so...
I see a lot, I've been around town quite a bit now, I've seen a lot of subdivisions don't have and I've seen a lot do. I think it's a lot prettier aspect when you do have some vegetation center.
In the town of Albany?
Not in Albany, Haneway, the surrounding towns and that stuff.
So there hasn't been a major subdivision in Albany since we had our updated street standards? So this is the first one after the updated street standards? So any subdivisions we had before...
We had other ones built to different, that exceeded the street standards.
Okay.
So like the Aviation Drive was built to the new street standards.
Before they were adopted?
Before they were adopted, because they agreed to do it. The Skara Meadows has a really small cul-de-sac and that was prior. They use the old regulations, so... You know, I mean, I'm not saying they're wrong, I just...
I was just asking, to me it seems like if you've got something written in there that a green space is supposed to be in with the construction of a roundabout. I'm just asking why it wasn't included in and to me that seems to be a more stringent.
As a road agent, I would tell you it would just be dug up and dead.
I get it, right?
So...
Hey, I've worked in construction a lot my life. I completely understand it. I'm just asking why a nice little green space maybe wasn't put in there. They can also run storm, more stormwater in that area too.
Yeah, we're already treating all the stormwater.
Yeah.
There's no issue there. Another possible issue with putting a center island in is fire access. If you've got a big truck trying to make that roundabout.
Well, if you've got a roundabout design big enough, you have no problem with that.
I get that, but I will have to ask our engineers...
Yeah, I just saw some ordinances in there. You had it listed as a hammerhead or a roundabout and with that roundabout, it stays in the green space, it needs to be in there and I'm asking why it wasn't put in the application. That's all I'm asking.
Oh, glad they asked the engineers about that one.
Clarification on that.
Have them take another one.
That'd be great. I guess the only other question I got is I understand with Habitat for Humanity, they do one, two houses a year, I guess, or whatever it is. So how long do you propose construction to take in this whole project?
That is well beyond what I know of.
I'm not assuming, you're not going to do like a regular contractor and have it wrapped up in one or two years? Is this a five or 10-year deal?
I don't know. I'd have to...
That's also why maybe we asked about a fence, because we're going to have to listen to construction for... Well, you can't give me an answer at this point.
I can't. I'm not the one paying for it. I'm not the one orchestrating that.
Totally. I'm just asking you, you're the representative. I didn't know if you had any answers to this.
I do not have any insight on that, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the board for letting me put in my input.
Is there anybody from Habitat, from Humanity here? Is there anybody that can answer that question?
There is. I don't know if they can answer that question, no.
We do build one home currently. We build one every year. We build on Thursdays only. But it's been a new project for us as well. It's just a hard question. It wouldn't be all five, obviously. I want to let you know that we're listening to everything the folks are saying. This is, we want to work, we're here. We want to work with you and take on your concerns. Everybody else, so I don't want to take away your view, but I want you to know we have Habitat listening to what you guys are saying and that's all we want to be, as the neighbors.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's a very good question.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Floor's still open to the public? If there's any further?
I'm here to answer questions. That's my entire purpose in life right now.
You say you're here to answer questions, but you don't have the answers to the questions we're asking.
I don't have all the answers, no, but I can certainly try and I'm more than happy to take the questions back and find the answers for them.
I guess what upsets me is that you were looking at the map and it's saying one thing, but you're telling me that's not where you're putting the houses. So we're getting all worked up about these houses, but that's not where they're going? You don't really know?
I do not know where they're going right now.
Just, hey, both direct to me and ask a question here. So it's not a conversation between the two of you. It's a conversation with the board.
Okay.
So it's a valid question. Ask a valid question. You're welcome to. You're entitled to it. So, do you want to come on?
So just, I'll just, we've kind of hit it. These square boxes are not houses. They're just where the septic can fit. That's all we are. So like, so I know it's confusing because it looks like it's a house, but they're just proving you can put a well on there and you can put a septic system on there. So the way it looks to me, like if you've got it laid out like this, the house probably is going to kind of be up more by the town, by the road. Then they're obviously not going to build the house on the septic system or on the well, so they're going to kind of be a lot farther from you, right? So then like I look at this one, this looks like it's going to be over here and this one looks like it's going to be somewhere here, you know? This is misleading because it's just like this square box and it makes you think there's a house. But I would think that, you know, I think it's just, it's making you nervous for no reason because it's, you know, and I can't imagine they're going to want to build a house right on the 26-foot mark. So I, so I, you know, I wouldn't let that get you to crack that.
So just kind of...
I think to your point, for each dwelling, they're going to commit for a building permit for each individual house. And at that point, they'll say where the house is going to be. The septic, the house, that's when you'll see, and that's when you can come in and say your complaint. But at this point, like the gentleman saying, this is all just to prove it can be done, it seems like an early stage. So for every lot, when it's time to build on that lot, these people will come in with their building permit application and say, this is where we're putting it. And then you can say no or yes.
And we'll...
Whether means anything or not. Exactly. Then you'll, and I think you have to tell your abutter. No, as long as you meet the setbacks. So it's the setbacks that if this shows, it doesn't show setbacks on it, it just shows like Curtis said, this can be done, but they haven't committed to the building permit yet. So then they'll go through that whole new process. My question was, is there street lighting?
I don't believe we have any proposed.
I wouldn't imagine you would, but it just came up in my brain that...
I don't believe there's any proposed.
I think that would be an issue for abutters if there was.
I do recall our street standards have a lighting that at an intersection, there shall be a light.
Yeah.
But let's look into that further.
Just for clarity on that, like, so if this is not a town road and it's not going to be a town road, so the town adopts it. If this gets approved and they put it on the warrant article and then the town adopts it, then the town's going to have some say in driveway relocation and call roads and things like that. It's a private road. We're not going to have much say, right? So and also if it meets the setbacks, when they come in to build a house, we're really not going to have much say. So what I would do is if I was a abutter, I would get with Habitat folks and say, hey, look, this is my concern. Any way you can tuck the house here, it'd be better for the people living in the house and it'd be better for you guys. So that's how I would approach it, because the towns only have certain authority over the building permit process. And they just like, like I said, as long as it meets the setbacks and, you know, then you've got the state with the DES and meets, you've got to be a distance from the well and well has to be a distance from the septic. It has all that stuff, but a lot of that stuff doesn't have much to do with the town after this gets approved. So I would take that approach if this gets approved.
Thank you. All right. Any further questions? Public or board comments? So hearing none, I would propose, I think we have some things to work through on the board end. And there's some questions that were asked on, of HEB and Habitat to kind of get clarification on a few things. So I would propose that we adjourn this public hearing with the continuance at the next monthly Albany Planning Board meeting, which is... On December 9th at 6:30.
So just for that, is public, is public closed? So just for that discussion, so there's a few questions. The state driveway permit's a question that we're going to need to make sure. That would be nice if we have the state driveway permit. I'm sure the fire department's going to be more than happy with a 70-foot cul-de-sac, but if it's required to have green space, we need to look at that. Then we can write in, we can get on the ledger, the daily inspection and who pays for it. That would be nice. So we're not just scratching in another whole thing. These guys can bring it all written up like that. We can reschedule a little bit in like the cul-de-sac, like we talked, like the question was asked. The DES stuff, that's the DES, that's not really the town.
DES?
The DES stuff.
The wetlands?
Well, that's kind of, it's the DES. It's not really our authority. That's all I had.
All right. My other questions were the process of accepting the road or street. And this is for the board again. This is the first major subdivision I've been involved in. The acceptance of the street by the town would happen once the road is completed? Once the whole project is completed?
So they have to build it like, they have to build it to our town standards. It doesn't mean it's a town road when they build to our town standards. It just means that when, if they petition, get enough people and get it on the warrant article, then it can come in front of the town body and we can either vote to accept it or vote to not accept it. I've seen it happen, you know, we've, I've seen them deny it. We've had a road that, you know, 20 years ago that we denied. But until then, until the whole voting body in the town votes on it, it's not a town road. It's just built to town standards. Just like Skara Meadows, uh, the Skara Meadows on Drake Hill, I think it's Skara Meadows, on Drake Hill Road, the subdivision, yes, Skara Meadows. They built that to the current road standards of that time. Aviation Drive, they built that to exceed the town standards, but they agreed and they'd never bring it to the town, which is a really odd process, but that's the way it went down. So that's it. I mean, it's not a town road. They just built it to town standards.
I think my question to clarify is if the road is built to town standards and a petition is put on the warrant, that could all happen before a single house is built. Is that correct? Or would you only accept the road after all the houses are built?
I don't think so. I think there has to be people in there to bring it, but I would, that would be...
It would actually require substantial completion of the project before it's even available for a petition.
Yeah.
But substantial completion could just be the road?
Not really for subdivision.
No?
That would require, in this, probably three houses being built.
Yeah.
You'd need residents in order to claim that there was any value to the town.
Exactly.
Even if someone was to try and bring a road with no houses on it to a vote, it doesn't meet the criteria for accepting it on the town's end.
Thank you.
Yeah, it would be a hard sell if there were no taxpayers in this and there was this gentleman there saying, hey, it needs to be a town road. It wouldn't be a good town meeting for him, I would think.
So, okay. My other question was bonding. That is in our subdivision. And so I don't know, Mr. Bartlett, if you have a bonding presentation or consideration?
Generally beyond my scope.
Okay. So that needs to be figured out, because I believe the town would want the bonding.
Going to ask the Habitat crowd, have they, I would assume they would have...
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Has Habitat in the past done bonding for its projects to the towns?
I don't believe so. I would have to check that.
Would, yes, would you please? Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you.
And it would be just a bond for the construction of the road itself, not for the buildings.
Correct, and this is our first subdivision. So I just want to say no, but I hate to put that on the record.
Yeah, no, we've got time. Thank you. And then the last thing was in, I was reading through our subdivision regulations and there is something I didn't hear about base flood elevation data. Do you know if that has been? It is, let me check before I include it.
It is, let me check before I include it. No portion of the subject premise was within a FEMA designated flood hazard area. So there will be no base flood elevation shown.
So nothing's within the 100-year flood?
Right.
Okay, because that's what it is. It's here in our special flood areas, area.
Yeah, every project, we analyze whether it's in the flood zone or not, and we, we will show the flood zone if it is.
Okay.
But this, no, no part of this is.
Yeah. And that makes sense to me. I just have a side note, if anyone knows or doesn't know, where this parcel of land is, is right on the watershed. It's at the high point of the watershed. Almost half of your houses are going to be shedding water to the south, down towards Shakara. And the other houses are going to be shedding water to the north, up into, well, Lovejoy Marsh, and then up into the Quaken. So, so it's right on that dome. So it makes total sense to me that there wouldn't be a flood hazard there because it's, it doesn't look like it has much elevation, and it doesn't, but its elevation is right at the high point. So, there's that. All right, that was all my questions. Last check for any further questions, comments, or we adjourn and have a continuance of the public hearing at the next public meeting. Hearing none, I will officially adjourn this public hearing at 7:42 PM. To be continued on December the 9th at 6:30 PM here at the Albany Town Hall. Thank you all for your time, patience, and work. All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Take care. Let's do the easy stuff. Let's approve some minutes. Last month's meeting minutes, everyone had a chance to review. October the 14th.
I didn't, I didn't get the line. I didn't get a mail to me, I don't believe.
No? Okay. We'll table that, I'll reemail them, and we'll put that on next month's agenda. So then, on the agenda, we have for consideration, a meeting with Tara Bamford via Zoom. She's a private consultant. She previously worked at North Country Council as a planner, and then has been a private consultant for municipalities, at least in New Hampshire, I think in, maybe in Vermont as well. If I can connect a Zoom here with her, we can hear her presentation or proposal for zoning ordinance, kind of housekeeping, cleaning things up, cleaning up our definitions, cleaning up inconsistencies. We'll see if I can actually get a Zoom going here.
We're going to number 10?
What's the question?
We're going, so we're jumping over eight, nine, and then?
I was just moving to ten because Ms. Bamford's waiting, basically, so if we can make this All right. And, let's see, I'm going to put this on that table, move the table over and come over with you guys so we can all see this together.
You're going to bring the table closer, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, working on it, getting there. Unmute, start video, let's see. We're getting Oh, good, lovely. Hi, Amalia, I hope you're recovering well.
Something like that, but I didn't break any bones. Yeah, but the drooling in the car takes you life out of you. Yeah, yeah.
I cannot imagine, I'm so sorry.
I have a little black of blues and cotton sugar glasses, but that's it. Yeah. I will survive. Yeah.
All right, so we have free, I don't know, should bring it closer. We're just on this laptop, so it's not the best audio or the best sound, but. Can we squeeze in Jim so he can be in here? I don't know.
Yeah.
Kurt just has to sit in the bathroom. All right, well, quick introductions. Hi, I'm Sean Wadsworth, Chair of the Planning Board, Morris Vice Chair, Brian Bailey, Jim Duroy. And we have one more member come in here, and then we'll move forward a little bit. Harris, can you just say hello and introduce yourself?
Thank you.
Are you on this one? You're not on this one?
That's all right.
And then, Amalia, thank for joining, and Ms. Bamford, thank you for joining. So we're here to hear your proposal on doing some housecleaning on our zoning ordinances.
Sure. So I took a quick look through your ordinance to be able to give you an estimate, and saw a lot of things that are, were never right, and some other things that need to be brought up to date. And that's pretty common. Every, every town that I, I'm a volunteer, one of the first things I did was help them with what we call housekeeping cleanup of the zoning ordinance. It just, it just happens over time. As laypeople are writing amendments, and you get petition amendments, and laws change, and it's a good thing once in a while to just get the whole thing straightened out, organized, get all those things that you've parked in appendices as part of the ordinance, so people see it all together. You know, just, just some quick things that I noticed going through. One thing I look for now, does the town allow short-term rentals? Is it clear if they do? And you don't, you don't say that word anywhere, and that all of the municipal attorneys would like you to be clear one way or the other, get it in there, have a definition. You have something called tourist home. Yeah, Sean?
It's, it's really hard to hear. So to whatever extent you can, you know, speak into the microphone and speak loudly, is it, you were saying the word rentals in the zoning ordinance?
Short-term rentals. That, one of the things I look for is whether towns address short-term rentals in the zoning ordinance, because everybody's interpretation of that, whether it's allowed or not, is going to be different unless you say it out loud. You have to list it. All the municipal attorneys are recommending you, you be straightforward about listing it as, as allowed or not allowed, and put in a definition. You have something called tourist home, that it's not a definition, that, that has no definition. If I had a home in Albany and I wanted to put it on Airbnb, I'm going to claim it's a tourist home. So that, that's where I meant about getting some terminology straightened out. Permitted uses and special exceptions, you have, you have some blurring of those lines. The permitted use is allowed by right, but you, you say in there, it's permitted if the planning board thinks it meets the special exception criteria. So that's, you know, that's, no, that would be a special exception, not permitted. There's updates needed for things like churches and parking. In the last couple of years, those laws changed and limited what, what towns can do. Zoning, your zoning districts themselves aren't quite clear what's going on, because you have the residential zone that, that seems to be all over town. And then the others act more like overlay districts, but don't really say they're overlay districts. So I always look at it that if I was issuing permits in your town, would I know what this meant? And, and that's kind of what tells me where the questions are. So one of the things, one of the big things is the ZBA roles versus your role as the planning board. Variance criteria are out of date. That's very best civic in the law. There's still some language in your sign ordinance about content, and that, the Supreme Court ruled some years ago now that if you have to read a sign to see if it's legal, then your regulations aren't, aren't constitutional, basically. So, so that's just the type of thing that I would be looking at, the type of thing that jumped out at me. The way I like to do this is to go, go through it in detail, go ahead and change the things that are no brainers, like an auto D or S E reference, but put notes right in the text of things that we need to talk about. Like, there's a better way to do this, what do you think of this? Did you, did you think about what the definition of this ought to be? And then that guides our first discussion or two. We go through those in tedious detail to get your direction from me of what, what you want the first draft of the amendments to look like, and then I'd come back with that, and we'd go back and forth till it was what you wanted. And I, and I help you through the public hearing process, write, write the notices and so forth. I usually write the language for the ballot and warrant, because that's, and make sure that it gets filed with the town clerk on time, and all of those procedural things that you don't have a town planner to do. Basically, I act like your town planner for the whole process. That's it in a nutshell. And, and I don't know how much you know about me, I, I've been a professional planner since 1985. I've worked in New Hampshire towns since 1988. So I've, I'm at the, I'm at the, I'm at the cutting backstage of things. But I reviewed your, your zoning ordinance years ago, and it looked like a lot of the things, I know they had some other things going on and didn't, didn't get to follow up. So for me, it's a little bit of a loose end. I'd love the opportunity to help you get it cleaned up.
Thank you. When you reviewed it years ago, was that just out of your own interest, or was the town invited you to?
I was asked to look at it for a couple of specific issues, and I, I couldn't help, I'm just pretty straightforward, I couldn't help mentioning some other things that I noticed.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. So I've been in correspondence with you for the rest of the board, this is a first introduction. And so, kind of just like to hear, we, we've been talking about our definitions specifically, and how some of them are vague or confusing, and have also kind of been exploited by some people to do things that are not the intent of the zoning ordinance, because it doesn't explicitly prohibit it. People are finding ways to do things that, probably not what the town wants, for lack of a better phrase. So I'd love to hear from the rest of the board, anything you're thinking.
Well, I think we have certain, there's certain things that we're concerned about. I think there's, there's three or four things that we want to address in the short term. So maybe if we could, maybe if we could just jot that down and email them to you, Sean, and you can forward them along, and maybe we just focus on those issues. Because any change we make, you know, we got to bring to the town body. So I, I don't necessarily think we want to totally tackle everything, or just things that haven't come up yet, or maybe we do. But we've had a few issues of, especially in our subdivision regulations, specifically, and we, you know, we have a two-acre minimum with a minimum frontage on any new roads, but then we also have a line in there that talks about cluster housing. So, you know, those have become issues for us. And then second dwelling, you know, you know, detached dwellings and definitions of that, that's been an issue. But I think those are, for me, those would be the things I'd want to focus on, so we can just get at least that done. Because I'm sure you looked at this 20 years ago for someone else on this board, and we probably haven't done anything since anybody looked at it.
I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm not willing to, I'm not willing to help you with definitions in an ordinance that I think has things in it that are illegal. I, I would really want to do the housekeeping to make it legal. It's, is my reputation professionally of, you know, having worked on something, and, and at the end it's not legal, that, that has an issue for me. So I'm not, I hope you understand that.
Yeah, no, I mean, I know. We, years ago, the town voted to have a two-acre minimum and certain amount of frontage. So you don't think that's legal, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying that, like, the language that has the planning board approving things using the special exception criteria, that's, that's not what the enabling laws say that the planning board can do, for example. Your, your variance criteria that isn't in conformance with state law, that state law that's been in place for a long time. Those things, I just wouldn't want my name associated with an ordinance that at the end of the process is not going to be consistent with state law in terms of procedures. That's, that's why it's, when Sean, you know, folds. That's why it's, when Sean, you know, full disclosure, Sean reached out to me saying you were most concerned about definitions, and I said, wow, there's a lot more in here that's broken that I think you need to fix. So, that's, so that was, that's my proposal, is to, you know, do it all, do it all at once. It's a little bit like the Band-Aid on the house that the foundation washed away from. Big, the mixing metaphors, but...
Well, thanks, that, yeah, that sounds like what we, what we need to do, if, yeah, if we're doing stuff that's not legal, that's, yeah, to me, is the primary thing first.
Well, that's what, my proposal would address all of those things, and the things you're concerned about. As one package.
Yeah, I can say, for me, the thing that concerns me for the town, representing the town, is that I'm serving to do the best I can, but I'm absolutely not a professional, and I don't know what I don't know. And somebody coming in with money that wants to make something happen, it's not on me, I'm pretty sure could run us over.
Yep.
Right, and that's what, right, so it sounds like you can really help us, and thank you.
Right, that's basically what, that's a big part of what I do for towns. And you just hit the, my goal's spot on, is really so that the hard work you do as volunteers holds up in court and doesn't get challenged.
So, there's the question of money. How much is it to do a housekeeping of the Albany zoning ordinance?
What I estimated was 12,800.
Okay. And that's a series of meetings over, how about, how much time do you think? A couple of months, two or three months, or...
Oh, no, it's gonna, you're gonna be working on it longer than that.
So for the year, basically?
It's not early summer, early spring.
Yeah.
And, you know, I like, do you have a regular March town meeting?
Yes.
Yep, I thought so. So, you know, ideally, you want to have your first public hearing in November, is nice?
Yep. So we're targeting March 2026, and having public hearings on zoning ordinance housekeeping in November of '25.
Right.
Jim, Brian, thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, it sounds pretty complete, you know, we have to... How do we present the money to the select board, or who does, how does that happen?
I don't know. I would think we need to get a proposal, a written proposal, so we can look at it as a board. And then, you know, maybe bring it to the select board, right?
And I did provide a written proposal.
Yes, thank you. I haven't shared it with the board yet.
Oh, I see.
Mine, I'm bad.
So how can I, so they don't know what their questions are, possibly, yet. But I did submit that, and the detailed steps. And so some towns, this is kind of, depends how your town works, some towns would put it in the Planning Board budget, and some would put it as a separate warrant article. Could be done either way.
Yep. And Jim, do you have any?
Yeah, I'm thinking.
Thoughts, comments?
I guess my, my question would be, when you looked at the ordinances, I mean, I as a resident of Albany would not like to see a lot of things changed.
Yep.
I would like it cleaned up, but I don't want to see this town become anything much more than what it is. So, I guess when you read those ordinances, what was your take on it? Like, we had to change things, or just had to clean it up and close the loose ends?
Well, I wasn't asked to look at it in terms of, will it achieve your vision in your town plan? I wasn't asked to do that.
Okay.
So I don't know.
Yeah.
And that's a whole different, I'm doing that right now for a couple other towns, but that's not, that's not what the ask was. It was more of a, help you get some things clarified and cleaned up.
Okay, and that's uncomfortable with that.
So my proposal doesn't make any substantive changes.
Right.
Just gets things clarified and cleaned up and defined.
So that seems to be where you're going.
That's where I'm going, yeah. I don't want to see a lot of substance change, I want to make sure we, you know, we answer those legal questions that we have.
I mean, if there's something easy that you want to change, that comes up, you know, we'll throw that in, but that's not really what the aim was.
Right, okay.
And I didn't know if Amalia had any, Amalia and I had been chatting about other things, but not this, so I don't know if she had any questions or comments.
No, I mean, I thought, I read the, I read it, yeah, but I, I mean, it was very confusing. I, you know, was taking notes and things like that, and I agree with Jim. I don't want to change Albany the way that it's written, and what I was able to envision with my, no expertise in this subject, yeah? But one of the things that I liked is, this is a small community, I mean, we have, I love the two acres land for housing and some other things, but I saw that the text was sometimes very confusing to read. And I blame it myself, because, you know, as you all know, I am the new person in this year, my experience is very limited, yeah?
But you know, to the extent possible, I like a zoning ordinance to be able to be picked up by somebody who owns a piece of land, or is considering buying a piece of land, and have a clear idea what they can do and can't do. Not, I mean, and for all of you, when you're new on the Planning Board, I don't expect you to know all the state laws yet, but you, but your own regulations should be readable and understandable. So that's kind of part of what I look for in working on the language.
Okay. Thank you, Amalia, thank you, Ms Bamford. Really appreciate it. I got to say for myself, we, I've been on the planning board for seven-ish years now, and we did go through a walkthrough of the zoning ordinance, top to bottom, with the Planning Board members at the time, who I think Morris was the only one with me. And we did our best, and it turns out, five volunteers doing their best, still left for a lot of holes, and a lot of ambiguity, and a lot of, you know, legal peril, basically, for the town. So, I'm in full support of hiring a professional to help us get our zoning ordinances just squared away. Not changing them drastically, but just getting them so that legally, they can stand. Because when I read it, I can, I, the layperson, can find holes in it, which means a lawyer can find a gazillion holes in it. So, that's the basis of it. It seems like a small amount of money, 12,000-ish, 13,000, to protect the town. So that's kind of my take on it. We don't have to vote on it right now.
But if we were, I would second that.
Yeah, I would want to get, I would, I'll share your actual proposal with the board, and we'll do a vote on it for next month's meeting.
Great.
That's my thought and my take, I don't know, any other, anyone last comments or thoughts?
And I have another meeting at the same time as yours, but I'd welcome, you know, if anybody has, gets their proposal from you and wants to email me questions, or chat my phone before that, that's totally fine.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Yep, welcome.
Alright, well, I guess we're gonna sign off.
Alright, have a good Thanksgiving.
You too, thank you, best wishes to you and Amalia.
Bye, bye, good to chat with you.
Yeah, take care.
Take care. I never know how to sign off. Oh, it's ended, zzzah. All the better. Alright. That's that, I just ran through the last little things on the agenda, which aren't much, but... Just stays there. Oh boy, select board report and group 16 updates?
Ah, not much.
Not much.
Nothing on group 16. No movement.
Um, the petition? So this is it, okay. Petition status, they're still being signed, nothing submitted, right?
I haven't seen any, but yeah.
Yeah. Who created, who initiated that petition?
Um, I think Kelly.
Okay. And same thing for the air brake?
Yep.
Petition?
Yep.
Okay. And what is the threshold there? Certain number of signatures that automatically carries? Do you have any? I'll leave it at that.
I think it's, it was, it's designed for Kelly to take, or to have taken to a meeting to show the concern.
Yeah.
Yep.
CIP sent an email to Curtis and Jim, and a few others from other boards, to hopefully get together a CIP meeting outside of the Planning Board, and to actually finalize that, so, haven't heard back from you guys, but I don't know.
That's tomorrow, right?
It was tomorrow, or the next week.
It was either, I didn't know if you meant either or, or you were...
Well, I was targeting tomorrow. And then if tomorrow just fails, then, you know, next week, but I haven't heard back from a single person, so, let's hear back right now. Would tomorrow work for you?
Works, yeah.
I have another board meeting, I have to be out.
What about next Tuesday?
So you don't need me there, I mean...
I think it's pretty critical to have you there. I think you get a lot of information, a lot of knowledge.
I mean, yeah, I mean, what time anyway, I can't go tomorrow, I'm not gonna load up.
Yep.
Different days? So Tuesdays is generally not good, right?
I can't go tomorrow, I just have a different board meeting that I've already committed to, but, I mean, I could, you know...
I mean, what is the, I mean, what is on the agenda of the CIP? I mean, I've attended probably 20 CIPs.
Yep.
And usually, they're a total waste of my time, to be honest with you. So, you know, I mean...
There was, I think there was just a handful of things that we needed clarification on, especially on your part, it was the bridge, Drickle Bridge. Because a lot of things have changed on that, I guess.
The Drickle Bridge thing is, the funding is gone.
Yeah.
Right, and so, then the board needs to figure out what they want to do to meet with the money that we've saved.
Right.
And that needs to go into probably a different fund, to maybe if we have to address a bridge issue, so if you want to put it in the Capital High Reserve Fund, or why not, probably that's the proper place for it, because that's the emergency fund. But from what I understand from Kelly, and I haven't talked to Alicia, right?
Alyssa.
Alyssa, 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 sorry. It was that that program's gone in the state of New Hampshire, that bridge, eighty, twenty grand.
So rather than keeping a capital, CIP account for that, and put money into it...
Put it in that Capital High Reserve Fund, that would be, I think we'd have to, I don't, I don't know, that would be a segment thing, but you guys would have to figure out how we do that.
Right.
So, and as far as infrastructure stuff, we're in really good shape, so, you know, we're gonna bring another warrant article to the town for some paving, but that's something I'm gonna talk with this board about on the fourth, or fifth, or sixth, or whenever I'm supposed to come in, on December, I'm, you've invited me, I don't know, maybe you can remember. But, this is for select board meeting, that's a select board meeting for us to set our budgets, and then talk about warrant articles and things like that, but setting the budgets more, so... But yeah, I'm just pretty busy, and then I got, I got some commitments this week, so I don't know.
Yeah, so it's kind of like we went back and forth on CIP, and, at being us, a representative on this board, with the select board, kind of like, I don't really know where we're going here, and who comes up with these numbers. I talked with Rick Island, he said that we should put together a meeting, and make sure that all the numbers on that CIP list are where we want them. I mean, we've got the chapels on there, actually, on the 19th, I had just put together a meeting for the chapel committee to start. So, I mean, that, even that's further off, to come up with numbers.
As far as me, I mean, the end of next week, I could do something, maybe, or the beginning of the following week.
Just to be able to cross some Ts and dot some Is, and submit the numbers in.
Yeah, no...
And I don't think it would take that long, really, if we get representation from each, each thing on that list, which I don't have in front of me, but...
I mean, we can glom on the CIP to following this select meeting you're talking about, December 6th, whatever it is. We could just say, CIP to follow.
And that's what we used to do, we used to do that.
We could do that.
Do I do that, then?
Yeah. I'll resend an invite for that.
That'd be great, that'd be great.
After the select board's next meeting. Which, well, our next select board meeting is the 20th, Wednesday, the 20th.
Of November.
Of November, yeah.
But you invited me, and for December, I believe, my phone's sitting on my counter, so I don't have it.
Yeah, if you can get the date, if it's the 6th, or if you could confirm the date.
Yeah, I will, one second. Figure out which calendar I need to look at. So it'd be December 11th?
December 11th.
December 11th, yeah. Alright, so I'll send an invite to have CIP following immediately after. Alright. So, zoning ordinance Bamford, zoning map, habitat, blah, 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 blah. I have nothing further?
Welcome to adjourned.
Thank you. All of you in favor? Meeting adjourned, 8:18, thank you.